The city commission meeting for October 6th, 2020. But the records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business, Mrs. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker. Yes, there is some changes here. We're going to remove under engineering number five, the B1. It's a duplicate that was -- it's also presented under public works. And so we're removing it from engineering. We're also removing two items out of the public hearing, B and C, due to there's still some issues that have not been resolved yet. It'll come forward later.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any discussion on the amendments to our agenda?
Mr. President moved to approve as changed.
We have a motion to approve the amended order of business. We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve. Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion on the amended order of business? Not all in favor state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Commissioners, the consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing no discussion on the consent agenda or questions for city staff, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do have the one, 5 o'clock, so we'll proceed into the regular agenda. And administration, you're up first. And Mrs. Carlson, you have the 2021 budget ordinance.
Thank you, President Decker and commissioners. Presented to you is the second and final passage of the 2021 Budget Ordinance Number 1702. The public hearing was set and heard on September 15th, and no changes came forth from that meeting. The 2021 budget presented with the general fund balancing with a total of $20,750,873. This is an increase of $397,446, or approximately 1.95% over the 2020 general fund total. With that, staff is recommending approval of the final passage of number 1702.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on the 2021 budget ordinance? As Mrs. Carlson stated, we already have the public hearing. This is the second reading. There are no questions, I'd look for a motion on the 2021 budget.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item up is our JLG agreement for the Dickinson Town Square. Mrs. Carlson, you'll be handling this.
Thank you. This is a task order. This agreement before you is an amendment to the professional services agreement back in February of 2018. And what this agreement does is set an amount of $332,000 approximately for professional fees with the total coming out of the soft costs of our total town square project. This amount was broke down by months and out of the progress and payment draw schedule that JLG provided. And Zach is, Zach Matherin is here, that can answer any other questions on that and what it entails, but other than that, staff is recommending approval of this agreement. And this will come out of the soft cost total.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this task order? Or I guess it's an agreement with JLG. And this is working towards the Dickinson Town Square.
Correct. On the thematic designs and stuff.
Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on this matter.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing no questions or comments concerning this matter, will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is chapter 39 amendment, and this is a consideration to re-appeal and/or amend chapter 39.10.30. Commissioner Oderman?
Yeah, so I approached Acting City Administrator Carlson a couple of weeks ago in regards to this because I got a phone call from someone who's running for office here in town or in the county, just asking about this. And I know this particular part of the ordinance comes up every election cycle. And I just like to talk about whether or not we are spending our time doing something that maybe we could be sending city staff and spending their time a little bit more efficiently in a more effective manner than regulating whether or not somebody has a political sign on their yard 30 days, more than 30 days before an election. So I mean, I guess the way I look at it, this is something that we don't need to have a city ordinance on. But we do, and I don't understand why. So I'd like to entertain just the conversation on whether or not this is something that we need to keep in city ordinance.
I appreciate you bringing this up because I remember also at one time having a discussion a few years back about us adhering to state law, the century code. And I thought we had made an amendment at that time to reflect state code. Ms. Wanko?
Yes. Turn sideways.
You're gonna have to sit.
I can hear all of you like, yes.
You're gonna have to sit straight, too.
I'm sure it's probably something really awesome to follow the screen. I'm even afraid to ask.
Just sit up for us. Quit laying down on the job.
The ordinance that you guys have in your packets is essentially, there is no revision on the ordinance that's in the packet. It's just going to be revised based on the discussion that you have this evening. You have the option of amending the time limits prior to election. You have the option of removing it altogether, as Commissioner Morgan suggested. And then also, too, it does encompass temporary and civic time. So obviously, there are political signs, election signs, but there may be also a situation where there could be other temporary signs that may go into someone's yard or property. So that may be a additional further discussion just beyond election times. But I am prepared to make the revisions based on the commissioner's decision.
Thank you. Again, I remember having this discussion a few years back about reflecting what state law was because the state removed the requirement that a sign had to be down. And when I first ran for office in 2014, or actually 2012, the sign had to be down before the actual election occurred. And I thought that we had discussed that when I first became a commissioner back in 2014 or 2015, that we were going to reflect whatever the state requirement was, which there's, you didn't have to have it down, basically, the day of the election. So we must have left in seven days after, and then 30 days before. I have no problem revising this.
Are we just trying on the political signs? Because if we scratch this, this is going to be the temporary billboard signs, this is going to be everything that people put up, sale?
I think section three kind of addresses that, that no more than 30 days without No, forgive me. Our planning director. Mr. Hadley. Excuse me, Mr. Hadley, you're sitting in the back of the room, and I can't even remember your name. Anyway, he can extend that. It's in here, the planning director, under extenuating circumstances. But I think it does address the temporary ground signs are only permitted for 60 days. This is more along the political realm of signage. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
Political signs? And I don't know, I can't speak to the county because out in the county, I've seen signs just stay up almost permanently, so.
Well, and I think maybe that's what got me thinking about this is just kind of get in alignment with state law, I mean, or county statute, whatever you want to call it. I just, I really think that it doesn't really match up well with, you know, other municipalities in the state. I think we're the only ones that have this 30-day limit. And I mean, I don't know how much time we're spending regulating this right now, but I think any minute that we spend regulating this is a waste of our staff's time.
I would say the only thing that we need, our staff needs to be aware of if it's in the city right of way.
Sure. Yep.
Private property and any other private business, but if it's in our right of way, then we need to be cognitive of signs and that.
But I would imagine.
I have no issue.
The background, a little bit, when I got, first got on planning and zoning, this was like the number one thing we worked on for almost a year, was our sign ordinance.
Well, I know we worked on it for a long time.
Revamping it. So I don't know if we make changes, does it need to go to planning first? Mr. Hadley?
Mrs. Wanko, does it need to go to planning and zoning first?
I mean, they're the ones that originally did this and approved it.
Yes, it would. It would go to the planning commissioner if you're going to amend it.
That's, I mean, we want to put this on the next agenda for planning and zoning. I don't have an issue with us taking a look at it.
We can, at the next meeting, we could have a discussion. We couldn't advertise it to.
Yeah, do the, just like have it as part of our work session or whatever.
We could definitely do that.
And they'll go through the proper channels, go through planning and zoning, and come back to us with their recommendations, and then we'll move forward. And Mr. Oderman, if you, you know, want to come to that planning and zoning and give your insight to this, I think that would be welcome.
And is there anything in the North Dakota century code about this that we need to make sure we're following or, because I'm searching the century code right now, and I'm not finding anything good, but I'm doing quick searches, so.
Ms. Wanko? No, she's frozen in time.
She's back now.
And she's present at the planning and zoning, correct?
Yes.
So she would be present for that, at that point in time.
Yes, she is.
Can you hear us?
Well, I can hear you. Apparently, I'm there twice, so.
Is there anything in the century code regarding these signs?
Just one thing to add. If you decided to come to the commissioner, to the planning commission meeting, we probably would have to advertise it as a city commission workshop as well, because there'd be three of you there.
And we can carry whatever.
Yeah, and I have no problem with you guys just carrying it.
Yeah. Yeah, we can.
Because I think you get the gist of where I'm coming from.
Right. Yeah. We'll make sure that we adhere to the century code and go from there.
I think the biggest problem, just to address that, well, Christina's looking at her stuff. The temporary signs that move around, that you can rent and put in, those have become kind of a moving target. I think Mr. Schwent, if he was here, could probably address that. Those are difficult things, the temporary things to track down and follow around. So I think that's, that was part of, some of the intent. And then if they're in the public right of way, then that's always created some problems.
Well, but I would imagine the right of way stuff is handled in a different area of this ordinance, right? I think we're just speaking specifically to F2A. That's highly.
Right, yeah. Sorry, I didn't, I didn't really look at that because I didn't know we were going to be, I was going to be talking about this, but.
I think it's specifically just the time period.
Yeah.
And I think we could leave most of this the same if we just wanted to have F4 specifically talk about political signs.
Right.
I mean, I think we could leave most of the ordinance intact. It would just be.
Just separate that out.
Separate the political signs out into a separate category, so.
We can definitely talk about that in October.
I'm not opposed to, just experience in the past, they don't last much longer than 30 days anyway because of the wind here, so.
I know I had one of those healthcare hero signs on my yard, and it would, it lasted about 30, 32 days because of the wind.
Yeah. The stands break off, but.
Yeah.
So we'll look to this item, we'll table this, so, and then we'll bring it forth in the planning and zoning. So I look for a motion to table.
So moved. Or second.
We have a motion table by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? All in favor state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next report is our HR report. Mrs. Nomenek.
Thank you, President Decker, commissioners. The first one on our list is police officer. We have recently made two offers. We did have a couple that didn't pan out for us, so we'll be opening that position back up. Communication specialist position is open until next week. The public works operation manager, we did have a successful hire, and he started today. David Klemm is our new public works operations manager. We're real excited about that. Solid waste recycling operator, we have two openings there. They did do interviews, and we had one offer, and it looks like we're going to have to go do some more interviews out of that round. We had a good number of candidates to choose from, so they will pick some more people to be interviewed. The street maintenance operator position, looks like we had two openings, and we had to rescind an offer. Oh, that's pretty old, actually. Looks like we haven't done interviews on that one yet. Firefighter, that one also is an old hire. Bookmobile Services Librarian, we did make a hire on that Bookmobile position. That was one that took us quite a while to try to get some applicants, but we did get some really good, good people applying for it, and were able to make a hire there. We had some limited hour library positions open, and were able to make a couple offers just this week on that position, those positions, so we're moving right along there. We had an opening in the assessing department for a property appraiser technician, and that person has started, so has been on board for a little while now. And then the city administrator, for those people who don't know, we did have interviews last week for the city administrator, and the commissioners have a tough job to try to reach out to everyone and get their opinions and make their decisions on who they're going to pick for that position. We did hire an administrative assistant for the Buildings and Codes Department, and that person has started for us. HR assistant, we have two openings for the HR assistant. One of them started last week, and the other one will start next week. So we did have two successful hires there. Water reclamation facility operator, we have interviews on that position. That one, we had one internal hire, it was a seasonal employee that was working for us. We did hire that person, and we're going to look further on that. And then the chief water utility operator position is open until next week, so we're just taking applications on that one. Any questions on any of these?
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the HR report? Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek.
Thank you.
We'll move into engineering. Oh, yes, engineering. There's nothing in fire or police this evening. So engineering, we have a Sim Street Improvement, a task order. Assistant City Engineer Marshick.
Good evening, President Decker, commissioners. Included in your packet was Task Order 16 with Apex Engineering for Sim Street Improvements. This task order is for professional services consisting of the planning, design, and construction engineering services for the Sim Street Improvements from Second Street to Museum Drive. These improvements include street pavement maintenance or reconstruction. Improvements also include utility upgrades that may extend past Museum Drive. The extent of the street reconstruction or widening and utility improvements will be determined during the project. So the fee is based on a percentage of construction at 17% for the study and report services through post-construction. City engineering staff recommends approval of Task Order 16. Are there any questions I can help you with? And I believe Mr. Schneider's in the audience, too, if we have additional questions he can assist us with.
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick or Mr. Schneider on this task order? This is Task Order Number 16. Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on this task order.
I'll move to approve this task order.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
The next item up is, we have a preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement for the North Dakota 22 Hart River Bridge. Mrs. Marshick?
President Decker, commissioners, this is a preliminary engineering reimbursement agreement with the North Dakota Department of Transportation to proceed with a bridge deck overlay and expansion joint replacement and full circum, circumference fall repair project on the North Dakota Highway 22 Bridge over the Hart River, which is on South Main. So they are looking for our agreement to move forward into this work that they, is well-needed on this overpass of the Hart River. I don't have a lot of information, other than the agreement that was included with your packet, so I will do my best to answer any questions that you have.
Mrs. Marshick, I'm looking for a timeframe for the construction. Are they looking at, this is something that would be done next year?
That is my understanding.
And do they anticipate when they work on this? Is that going to shut, be shut down completely?
I haven't got that far into this project yet. It sounded like this is just kind of the kickoff. If we agree to get on board with this, then they'll start looking at it and move forward from there. So it's very preliminary.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Marshick on the Highway 22 Hart River Bridge
And I didn't see any financials of any sort, and I'm assuming same answer as what you just shared. There's just, is nothing to even.
There's nothing to share, other than the document that included in your packet. It's really very preliminary, and it's bridge maintenance, which is something that the state has typically done. It kind of goes hand in hand with the inspection process, too, that they used to do for us, and now that that is getting hired out, we enter into agreements with them to work with their contractors on that end. So it's kind of a new process for us as far as this bridge maintenance.
Since it's a state highway, does the state fund a portion of this usually, or is this going to be something the city will end up funding, or is it going to be a joint venture, do you think?
Good question. I haven't seen any kind of agreements of a cost share. I sure can find that out and share that with you. Thank you.
Commissioner Marshick, a lot of the DOT projects and right of ways, you know, the city has a maintenance agreement that we're in charge of maintenance of it. And I think if it's probably minor maintenance, I would say we're probably responsible. I know they've called us for maintenance on some of the overpass decks and things like that. So I don't know if this falls in, but there, anytime like the west or east business loop that's getting done in the trail, you know, they'll sign a maintenance agreement with us before they construct it that we're responsible for maintenance. So I'm sure some of this might fall into the regular maintenance agreement of our portion.
So we'd be approving just to move forward with the study to see what needs to be done, not approving the whole project at this point.
Right, once we get further along, we'll get more agreements that have the dollars and what they plan to do.
Details.
More information, definitely.
Okay, are there any other questions for Mrs. Marshick or staff on this Hart River Bridge repair? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move into public works. Mrs. Zurov, you have a wastewater agreement with Mr. Heinen?
Yes, Commissioner Decker and commissioners, the first agreement I have is with Andrew Heinen. It's a wastewater agreement to connect to our sanitary wastewater collection system. We do agreements for all connections outside the city limits. He wants to connect to our 24-inch gravity main right before lift station 10 on Highway 10, and this is our standard wastewater agreement for those outside the city. Attorney Wanko has reviewed, and staff recommends approval.
This is just for his home, or?
I believe it's a shop.
I think I read in there, there will be testing, additional testing if, by, by the city of the.
Right, and that's one of the things, the connections outside, we want to be able to monitor the quality of, you know, depending on what it is. Also, you know, in the agreement, it does, you know, the property owner agrees to annexation, things like that, SIDs if needed. Those were some of the standard portions of the agreement when we first started allowing connections outside the city limits.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Zurov on this agreement with Mr. Heinen? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It is 5 o'clock. It's time for the public hearing and public comments that are not on the agenda. First up is the public hearing for Chapter 2 Code Amendment. This is the consideration to approve the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1701. City Attorney Wanko.
Yes, Mr. President, Commissioners, this is the ordinance on the second reading, and that has been brought in for basically updating the Chapter 2 Code ordinance, which provides certain restrictions for in-person forum meetings. This, again, is simply to update the code to allow for more than three commissioners to be present via other electronic means. Obviously, this is coming because of the issues with the pandemic and COVID. Staff recommend approval and recommend no comments have been made by the city staff.
Thank you, Mrs. Wanko. Any comments, questions, Commissioners?
Just for future reference, what is defined as a reasonable amount of time to let the city administrator know?
If you're not going to-
That we left a little bit loose in talking with Deputy City Administrator Carlson. I believe, you know, 24 hours is sufficient. Also, certain requirements may require that, you know, five hours for the meeting because things come up.
Yeah.
So we want flexibility for the commissioners to be able to do that so that the city operations go. But I think that just has to come with some flexibility so we can talk for things that come up.
Okay.
We have been flexible in the past.
Yeah.
We understand that things do happen, family emergencies, other items. I don't think, if you can provide that you're not going to be here, that's great. And if you can provide attendance through an alternative means, I mean, that's always welcome. I mean, that's why we're here, to hear everybody's opinion, so. But I do think we need it to have this amendment just because of-
Yeah.
All things going, so.
And I know, just from personal experience, when I've had to do it, the sooner you tell them, then they do test runs with you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just to use the backup system.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like 48 hours or something like that, that we're-
We're pretty flexible.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Mrs. Wanko?
In our new city hall, will we have a different system, or will we still be sharing the same system with the courts?
They'll be very similar. You're talking like the side panel?
Yeah.
I think that is their request to, if that is doable, to have their chambers because of how they're building it out. When you attended the other evening, those rooms along the side?
Like, we'll use the same system. We're not getting a different kind of video conferencing system there, or the different display. It'll still be on the TV on the side, or?
Well, I think it'll be upgraded technology.
Right.
But this is the state system, right?
Yep, this is through the state.
Yeah.
So it'll be the same system, just upgraded what we have.
Yeah, we'll probably have a different-
Probably have different monitors, yes.
Sure.
I know one of the requests that we put in, instead of the roll-down screens, just to have big monitors.
Yeah.
So they're clearer, and we're not dealing with a bunch of other issues that the screens are, so.
Any other comments or questions? Now I look for a motion. This is the second reading, so this will be the final passage.
Public hearing?
No, we already held a public hearing. Oh, excuse me, this is the public hearing. I thought we held it, so. Okay, if anybody has any comments, questions, they want to come up on this Chapter 2 Code Amendment, please come up, state your name. And if you wish to call in, please call in to 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
If there's anyone from the public that wishes to comment, please come forward on the Chapter 2 Code Amendment to allow Commissioners to attend the meetings electronically because of our circumstances. I'm not sure how much of a delay we have on our live feed, but give them a few moments. Anyone from the public? Any public comment? Seeing no one from the public has any comments on this Chapter 2 Code Amendment, I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further comments, questions for staff? Hearing none, I'd look for a motion on this amendment.
Mr. President, I move to approve the second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1701.
We have a motion to approve 1701.
I'll second it.
And a second. The motion to approve was by Commissioner Frederick, second was by Commissioner Sobeluk. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1701. The other two items on the public hearing this evening were removed, so we'll move right into public comments, not on the agenda. If there is anyone from the public that has any comments about items that were not on the agenda this evening, please step forward and let us hear your comments. If you are watching online, if you have any comments, please call in by, the number is 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any comments, not on the agenda? Seeing no one present has any comments and hearing nothing on the conference line, I'll close the public hearing. Move back into public works. Mr. Zurov, you have a task order?
Thank you, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. The next task order I have is Highlands Engineering Task Order is to provide construction engineering services for pavement markings on State Avenue from 8th Street Southwest to the overpass and 8th Street Southwest from State Avenue to Second Avenue West. It also includes minimal markings for Westridge Drive. Fees are based on hourly rates, not to exceed 27, 740. As you know, there is some temporary markings on State. Those are, as I said, temporary. Next year, it'll be the final preformed and grooved markings. So this will include construction, administration, staking, and final documents. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. This is Task Order 1999-77-02. And this is for the state's Avenue, 8th Street Southwest and Westridge Drive pavement markings.
And I would like to include, it's called, or city project number 201905.
201905. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this project?
Are they going to still get that done this year, they think, or?
The temporary is done. It'll be next spring, I believe, for the permanent marking. That will include the, also, just so you know, it'll be the same on Villard DOT, so they're going to do the permanent markings next spring also. What's there is temporary. So a lot of, there'll be a lot of new markings done in town in the spring.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Zurov or representative from Highlands? Now I look for a motion on this task order.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up, we have a task order, Mr. Zurov, for the South State Bridge, and this is with KLJ.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. This is a task order with Kedramas Lee and Jackson Engineering. It's to help us look at the South Avenue Hart River Bridge. There were some inspection results from the Department of Transportation noting that there's an alert on that bridge for erosion and scouring along the pier and the wing wall, that they feel requires immediate detention. I would like to try to get some of the work done this fall. So we have requested KLJ to provide recommendations and basic construction drawings for the needed repairs. At this point, I'm not sure the extent of the repairs. I'm hoping we can do some of the repairs in-house, but because of the depth and the reach, we might have to contract out some equipment to be able to provide maybe some additional rock or dirt in that area. But this will be, just to give us an idea what we need to do, and then I can, I'd like to get it done this fall yet. The agreement's on a standard hourly rate basis, an estimated 11,400, and city staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this review of the State Avenue Bridge and its issues around the wing wall? Hearing no comments or questions from Mr. Zurov, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mrs. Zurov, you have Engineering Task Order for, Task Order Number 7 for the Lift Station 11 and the Sim Street Sewer Collection System Evaluation.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Decker and Commissioner. If you recall, I believe it was the last meeting, KLJ did an update on the sewer collection system from Lift Station 11, which is north the interstate, south the Lift Station 18 on Sims. We've been looking at that for quite a while. There's been prior issues with Lift Station 11. And I think it, we looked at what we need to do to possibly eliminate Lift Station 11, Lift Station 18, and Lift Station 9. And now that we're looking at doing Sim Street as a project, this is, this planning really needs to be done, you know, now to look at what's needed underneath. If we can upgrade that size of pipe and eliminate a couple lift stations, what can we do further down for Lift Station 9? So this, I feel this planning, and we feel this planning is needed now before we build Sim Street. It's going to be quite in-depth to look at flows, elevations. It's all in the task order. Possibly upsizing different lines. It includes a field investigation of the sewers connected to Lift Station 9, impacts to the 10th Avenue East Intercepter, Lift Station 14 assessment. The planning and analysis will give us recommended alternatives for the Sim Street Improvement Project. I guess, I think they did a pretty good presentation, but if you have any questions on it, I can try to answer on the whole project. I think long-term, this will benefit the city if we can fix the issues on 11 and 18 and/or eliminate them. Long-term savings will be tremendous, I feel.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this Task Order Number 7 with Apex Engineering?
I think this project on Sims is long overdue. Going to take some pretty extensive work, and I hope we can get it done in a timely manner. But I do think this is an important project to get done right now.
So if there are no more comments or questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Walla moves to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions on Task Order Number 7 on the Sims project? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings to an end our normally agenda. We'll move to commission portion of the meeting. Commissioners, are there any items that you wish to bring up that were not on the agenda or need to be brought to city staff's attention?
Just a little project update. Can Gary or Loretta give us a little update on Westridge? When the pedestrian bridge will open also, and then maybe the lighting project on Villard. Is that on a standstill? Getting some questions, so I just-
I can help you out, Commissioner Frederick. So October 13th, I believe, at 1:00 PM, they're having the ribbon cutting for the pedestrian bridge. And the holdup on Villard, they are waiting for lighting to come in. They're anticipating that sometime this October, and hopefully they'll be able to complete what the rest of the lighting yet this fall.
All the, because all the old poles are going away and they're replacing them all, correct? That's-
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Schneider's in the back nodding his head vigorously, so.
People just asked if we were done, and I didn't think we were, so.
No, no, we're waiting on poles, and historically, poles are difficult and take time to get in, so that's the holdup on that project.
And with COVID and all the materials, everything is hard to get right now, so.
As we, as we get further out of the downtown, there'll be the higher lights, but it'll include all of it from 10th to Vermont.
It's pretty close to 10th, yeah. And then with the next project, it'll continue, they'll continue with lighting when we do the east business loop. So it'll really be a nice corridor.
Yes, it looks nice now.
And then Westbury's Drive, how's that project, Gary?
It's going fairly well, I believe. Andrew's here. You know, I believe they moved to the south end last week, the south side. My understanding, things are going, going well and hopefully wrap up. I'm not sure the date we're going to wrap up. Maybe I'll let Andrew give us an update on that.
Thank you. Andrew Schrank with Highlands Engineering. We've finished the westbound lanes. Those are all replaced at this point. They're working through the eastbound lanes. The concrete moves are done on that side. They're probably halfway through the subgrade repairs and getting close to starting to pour some concrete. Our substantial completion date is October 17th, and we're going to be pushing right up to that date to get done. So hoping to avoid LDs, but it's going to be really, really close. So in two weeks, we're hoping to have that road opened up and ready for traffic, but that's where we're at today.
Thanks, Andrew.
I can give you an update on a couple of the projects quick, if you wish, on our reuse pipeline. All the pipe is in. If you go on 116 and Highway 10, you'll see purple hydrates, which you don't see very often. But I think there'll be pressure testing later this week or next week. So that project is done fairly smoothly and be done soon. As far as the public works, smaller projects, the main replacements are done, and we're getting ready to patch and pave, pave most of those. And so those continue. And right now, it's a push, along with the Melonole to get everything paved before they tell me winter's coming. paved before, they tell me winter's coming, so we're trying to get things wrapped up before winter.
I have a question. Why purple hydrants?
Reuse water, standard color is purple.
Okay.
So, you know, green is sewer, blue is water, and then if you see marks on the ground, orange is gas, red is power, purple is standard color is reuse.
I need a little legend for all that.
They have both.
Just don't go cracking them. They've got a good, good rule to live by, so. Anything else, Commissioners?
I just have a follow-up to the trail pedestrian bridge. One, are the lights going on then, October 13th?
I think the lights have already been on.
No, they haven't.
I've seen them on.
Yeah, they've been testing them because they were on. I was really surprised.
They went on at 5:00. It's horny.
Okay. I'm not sure what the timing is of them, but I had seen them on, so I don't know. I would guess...
I've seen them on ones, too, so maybe they were just testing them.
That's it. In the mornings, when we go running, they're not on.
They're not on.
I would say... That's right, we got lights.
Ribbon cutting would be the day.
Okay.
Okay.
Some nice projects to get finished up here.
Anything else? Just for our sake, we need to decide next Tuesday or Wednesday to get together for our special meeting for collection of, or discussion, I'll say, on city administrator because they, this staff needs to advertise it, a special meeting.
So I have Leadership Dickinson all day Wednesday until 3:00, so I couldn't meet till after 3:00 on Wednesday. Tuesday, I'm wide open.
Others?
I don't know when we're having the task force meeting. That's going to be Wednesday next week, either in the morning or the afternoon, because that's still tentative.
Right, that was Wednesday or Thursday?
Well, Tuesday, I have to be here for another meeting at 1:00.
At 1:00.
So we can do it, whatever works out, I guess. Tuesday works for me, I guess, so I have to be here anyway.
And Commissioner Walla, Zach is here, so we can let him know to change our poll if we have to. If Tuesday, if you Commissioners decide Tuesday, then we can look at Wednesday or Thursday or something on the poll.
And I think Tuesday evening at 4:00, I have the library meeting.
So we can...
Because do you have the airport then?
Meet, yeah, meet 2:30 on Tuesday? Does that work for you guys? Your other meeting done by that time?
It should be. It should be. We're meeting at 1:00.
1:00 to 2:30 is what it's scheduled for.
Yeah, well, it should be done by 2:30.
Yeah.
You anticipate it going any longer than that, Mrs. Carlson?
I'm just looking at to make sure I know which one we're looking at. I don't think of, I think for sure will be done before that.
By 2:30?
Yeah, I do.
Mr. Oderman, that work for you, 2:30?
Yeah.
Okay. Mrs. Sobeluk, Tuesday?
Yes.
2:30?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Walla, you're good?
I don't have my work scheduled here, but I'll let you know if it doesn't.
Okay. So 2:30 next Tuesday?
Okay.
Look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned.